Yesterday, Brazilians love their coffee as well. So before we start the special session, Brazil calling the road to Rio, I am excited to announce the launch of a very special publication curated by my colleagues at ORF, Professor Harsh Pandt, Vice President ORF, and Ms. Shari Malhotra, have curated a compendium of essays titled Think 20 India 2023: Critical, Constructive, Conclusive. The compendium is by a group of experts from the G20 countries covering issues across all seven task forces. So it is my pleasure to now invite Ambassador Muktesh Purdesi, Ambassador Sujin Chinoy, Dr. Samir Saran, Professor Harsh Pandt, and Ms. Shari Malhotra to together please come on stage and formally launch this publication. It will be available at our registration desk along with all of the other publications, all seven task force statements and the compendiums at the registration desk and of course on the QR codes. The compendium explores the core themes of India's G20 presidency, highlighting challenges but also framing pathways to sustainable solutions. Each essay captures the provocative spirit of the T20 engagement process. As India hands over the G20 baton to Brazil, another member of the Global South, we hope the insights in this volume will continue to enrich the debates ahead. Thank you dignitaries. I now invite the panelists of the most exciting session of the summit, what's ahead, the road to Rio. May I invite Ms. Luciana Servo, President IPEA, Ms. Maria Fernanda Espinoza, Executive Director GWL Voices, Ambassador Marcus Karamuru, Member of the International Advisory Board of SEBRI, Minister Almir Nasimanto, the Director of the International Relations Research Institute in Brazil, and to chair the session, Professor Harsh Pandt, Vice President ORF. Thank you for that, Dr. Saran and Professor Pandt.
Thank you. Thank you Janvi, and thanks to all of you for being very generous with your time and your patience as we are now at the very end of this two and a half day set of conversations that we have had, very productive. The distinctive feature of this panel is that this is about the future. We are looking at Brazil, we are looking at its presidency, we are looking at it from various perspectives, both how Brazil looks at it and also we have Latin American perspective here and also perhaps I'll chip in with my sense of where this is going. So a very interesting conversation where we are today and how we look at continuing this conversation that we have had not only the past few days but also this entire year and perhaps also in Indonesia under Indonesian presidency, something that we have been talking about, this continuation of dialogue, continuation of this building of consensus across the world and in particular in the Global South and this troika of Indonesia, India, and now Brazil, how they can take this conversation forward. Now to begin with, I will just give the floor to you Maria to give a sense, so Luciana to you first, to give the context of the broad engagement that perhaps you are looking from a Brazilian perspective as you take on the presidency, as the baton goes to you and you take this conversation forward on a range of issues. So perhaps you can set the context and I'll then invite the two Brazilian experts here to provide their inputs and then I'll come to the broader Latin American perspective. Over to you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to bring some of the insights that we have while you are organizing the T20 Brazil. I just want to first present the institutions that are part of this panel. I am for the Institute of Applied Economic Research with a think government of think think, but autonomous government of think think that works with a lot of topics, international and national topics in Brazil and not only economics, although the name is economics. And we've been part of the T20 for quite a long time. Also SEBRI, who I think is the most antique, yes, the one that had the oldest that has been part of the T20. And Mr. Karamuru is also part of the committee representing SEBRI in this panel. And Mr. Almir is from Funagi, who is a foundation of research and thinking that is linked to the Ministry of International Affairs. We have come together to try to start organizing the T20 in Brazil because we have been participating in the T20 and you know that you have to do some things in advance. And what we think about this is of course giving continuity to what has been done by the other think thinks mainly by Indonesia and India in the perspective of the development countries but bringing all the experience that we have from the T20 and going from this to the topics and that are more interesting of the Latin American and Brazil in itself. And what I'm thinking about in this sense that you have an opportunity of this troika, yes, that we have all the development countries doing this process from Indonesia, India, Brazil, and South Africa, bringing the topics of development countries to the debate is quite important and this has been part of the debate here these three days. But we also think that we have to go forward in what have begun in this Indian process that we call inclusion, representativeness, and effectiveness. By inclusion, what it means that we need to bring from India on even more think thinkers from the Global South, think from the North, but also think from think thanks from Latin America. So you want to engage other think thanks in this process and have a participation and inclusion and engagement on this process. Besides that, you want to do as has been done by other presidencies of T20 and G20 to engage with other engagement groups, bring them to participate in dialogue with them. We have been contacting the other engagement groups in Brazil that are starting to do this process of organization of the T20, the G20 Brazil. We want also think thanks with large experience and newcomers, as we say. We want to have the opportunity to train think thanks that are think thanks or national or regional think thanks that has not large experience in T20 but had experience in dialogue with international topics. So we are going to use this opportunity to bring what you call newcomers to the process and try to train them and make them participate in this process, including them in the debate. About how we are going to organize this, we are thinking that we have to have co-leaders with experience, co-leader chairs with large experiences and chairs that can have experience but can be brought together with someone that has less experience to work together and also have a gender balance in this process. We want to have participation of women as co-leader chairs and chairs as many as men if possible. And also in the process of writing the policy briefs to have national and international think thanks doing this together. It has been experienced in other T20s including in India, but having a representativeness of national and international think thanks in the co-leader chairs also. Besides that, we want to bring, we are already in contact with Brazilian officials that might be, has already been designated as the coordinators of the financial track and the SHAPPA track in Brazil and will be assuming this role from 1st of December. And we are trying to bring them to be even closer to the T20 as you have done this in India. But also we are counting on you all to bring your CHAPAs and the financial track and the coordinators in the financial track and the SHAPPA track to bring them also even closer to the T20, yes. We think that we might organize a council, we are calling a council of national council and international council of the T20. These councils will have think thanks that have been working in the T20, newcomers. And what will be the role of this council? Mainly first disseminating, as you have done in India, what is the 20, what is the 20, why it's important, how it dialogues with the other international representative organizations or other forms of organization in other, like the UN, like the IPSA, like BRICS, how do you align with all these agendas? Why is important to the think thanks, the national think things be engaged in the global issues and to be debating these global issues? Besides that, we want to have them to have a close collaboration with their agendas, the national agendas suggesting topics for the task force. In fact, the topics from the task force will be, will come from the G20. Yes, we want to have a close relation of the G20, it's part important part of the process of the T20. But from the subtopics, we think that we can consult with these other think thanks, national and international. We know there are topics that has to go on to continue but we want to see if there is emerging topics, new topics that might become to the agenda. In terms of the topics, as I've said earlier, we don't have yet defined all the topics but we know that inequality, hunger, and food security will be a really important topic for Brazil. We also know that in this also for this, this T20, we also know that the reform of the multilateral system is quite important and will continue to be important in the debate. Climate change and sustainability will be important. Gender equality, we don't know if it's going to be a task force but for sure will be important in the G20 agenda in Brazil. And we are also thinking that there are topics that might not come from the G20 but you want to go and continue with them like the digital economy, digitalization process, digital access to service and others. So we hope to have these topics by September, although the G20 only wants to tell what are the topics in 1st of December, but you want to start to talk to the Indians from November on and we are already talking but start on a formal process of handover and also from November on and have the topics and the dialogues with other think thanks, national, international think thanks to start the process and when we, in fact, from 1st December on start producing all the policy briefs and all the things that we need to do, the events, the summits, the side events to engage the think thankers. The only ones that are already engaged will be invited to continue participating because the ones that has experience, it's fundamental that their experience continues in the participation process, yes. And also the ones that we intend to come, bring from national think thanks, Latin American think thanks and other Southern voices and other think thanks that are not being so active in participation, Northern think thanks also. How to bring them all together and continue this process of building this Global South agenda, this debate about the development agenda and the less developed countries bringing to the agenda and also how to do dialogue with the most developed countries in the world to get together and establish some common agendas. That's, I think, is the introduction.
Thank you. No, I will request the ambassador and then Almir to add to what Luciana just said.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I want to say that it's very difficult to step on the Indian shoes because the work done here was excellent, was brilliant. And we are very much thankful to India for all the efforts made to organize these meetings, to provide us with the comfort and all the facilities we have had here and in the three meetings and to organize the agenda and the debates in a brilliant way. I want to make, Luciana said it all, I want to make just three brief comments. One about the agenda. Of course, the agenda of the Global South is going to be there. Not because, you know, of a political motivation of the Global South but because these are sensible issues to discuss. We have to discuss them and we have to try to find solutions for many of the topics that are under discussion. Sometimes I think that we exacerbate our disagreements in terms of the agenda. We have disagreements, of course, the Global South, the T7, we have disagreements. We have disagreements perhaps on the role of the multilateral institutions and the reform of the multilateral institutions, on financial for the development, the modalities, on financing the low carbon, the measures towards the low carbon economy. There are disagreements but there are several important points of agreement and we have to be able to explore these points in a positive way and highlight them just for, highlight them in our debates and to those who follow all debates outside our group. I heard yesterday President Lula speaking to a meeting of the Amazonian countries and in a very powerful speech that he made by heart, he was not reading any text, he emphasized two points, one inequality, this is something very strong in his mind, and the second point, the reform of the multilateral institutions. So we have been discussing with the public sector about their own priorities. We have not, they have not yet totally defined and we have not totally defined ours but I can imagine that these two points, having heard this speech, is going to be a very important point. I think the challenge in the agenda is continuity and innovation because we have to continue what has been done in the Indonesian T20, here in the Indian T20 but we have to be able to innovate and we will have to be able to advance. We have to be able to go beyond that. We are very much aware that these are challenges and we are thinking about that. We still have a few months to think more and make proposals to you but we want you to know that this is very much in our minds. My second point is about stakeholders. We are an engagement group of the G20 and we tend to believe that, well, the purpose of our work is to influence the G20 itself and the governments and to speak to them. And it's very much true that this is an essential part of our work. But I think we also have to believe as stakeholders, the private sector community, the opinion leaders, you know, different groups that exist in our own society. Given the characteristics of the Brazilian reality, I can imagine that the press is going to follow closely what we will be discussing and also the private sector is going to be following closely. They have already been approached to us in the sense of, they want to know what we are going to do and they have very much clear in their minds that these are opportunities to pass on messages to those who take decisions, those who take decisions at home and those to take decisions about the international reality. So we expect that these, these audience, these stakeholders are going to pay a lot of attention to what we will be doing in Brazil and this will be a good opportunity, I think, to pass on our own messages. It's absolutely relevant to believe that, you know, there are scholars, academics, think thanks from all over the world are discussing the international issues and making proposals. And there will be a lot of curiosity in Brazil, knowing the Brazilian press and the Brazilian reality and the Brazilian entrepreneurs about the substance of these discussions and what we are going to deliver in terms of results. My final comment is that, you know, we don't leave outside the world. And next year, there will be a number of important meetings. One of those important meetings is going to be the summit, the United Nations, the Future Summit, the Commonwealth Future Summit by the United Nations. Actually, the summit is going to happen two months before the G20 presidential meeting because the summit is going to happen in September, the presidential meeting is going to happen in November. We will have to prepare our results much before that but I can imagine there will be a lot of preparation for the summit, there will be a lot of discussion for the summit and in a certain way, we will have to pay attention to this, we will have to interact with these discussions and then have as much as possible a broad view internationally of what we can achieve and what we can produce at the T20. Thank you.
Thank you ambassador. Over to Almir. I think you had some messages that you wanted to convey as well.
Thank you very much. My first words are to speak in the name of the President of the Alexandre de Guzmão Foundation, Ambassador Marcela Loureiro, to congratulate the team India for the superb job that has been done during the Indian presidency and also to say that we are in the T20 Brazil. We are now very aware that the high standards that India set, we'll have to be able to meet those standards and there's a challenge in that we take with gratitude. I would like to also stress that all this summit has been a very important opportunity for us to see how valuable is a T20 that can discuss, develop, and exchange ideas and discuss concepts that are also important. But this morning, there was another topic that caught my attention is the topic of implementation. Implementation is a key word. We cannot just formulate ideas, we have more and more to think about how to put them into practice. After hearing Mrs. Luciana Servo and Ambassador Karamuru, I would like just to make a brief comment. I would like to present very quickly three points that I believe that would add to what has been said up to now. The first one is that, as you know, Brazil is both an Amazonian and an Atlantic country and we are striving to advance foreign policy and cooperation in both of these areas. In what concerns the Amazonian side, the reconstruction of public policy for the Amazon region is one of the priorities announced by President Lula for his third term in office. The capital of the state of Pará was chosen to host the United Nations 30th Conference on Climate Change and as part of our preparation for this momentous task, the city will host the Summit of Amazon Cooperation Treaty Organization, ACTO, an international organization that aims to promote sustainable development associated with preservation in the forest region. This summit will take place next week on 7th and 8th of August and will preceded by the Amazon Dialogues, which will bring together a set of initiatives organized by the civil societies with the aim of guiding the formulation of new strategies for this region. Such initiatives involve representatives of social movements, academia, research centers, and government agencies from Brazil and other Amazonian countries. The Alexandre de Guzmão Foundation is part of this effort and we are co-organizing a seminar titled The Results of the Amazon Dialogue. These results will be presented to the social, to the civil society and the representatives of civil society will after that present those results to the leaders gathered at the summit. So we believe this is a special event and assuredly an opportunity for stimulating a significant participation of think tanks originating in Amazon countries in the activity to be developed by Brazil within the T20 task force. It means that we have to take the opportunity that we have for very important and world-scale meetings like this one to make, to advance some ideas and to engage think tanks in this case. My second point is the fact that Brazil is also an Atlantic country. So Brazil hails its social-cultural ties that constitute one of the main pillars of our society and that connects us with the African continent. As Brazil aims to launch, to relaunch, better saying, the relationship with Africa, we recognize the value of our African roots and celebrate Africa's contribution to our culture and the central role of the continent's national identity. Last 25th of May, when Africa is internationally celebrated, the Day of Africa, President Lula recalled that, and I quote that, "The African Union is a source of inspiration for South America in building a unity that respects the diversity of its members." So we are all waiting for having African Union as full member of the G20 and I am absolutely convinced that will provide a valuable opportunity to involve African think tanks in the T20 Brazil process. So in other words, what we are trying to do is to attract, is to involve a relevant number of Latin American think tanks and also African think tanks. We have, as we know within G20, that we have common challenges that can only be tackled successfully if we count on the work and contribution of as many institutions and researchers from different countries as possible. I believe it was yesterday, Mr. Sharad Sharma used the Hindu expression, I'm not, I kept the concept, is the music, the musician's dialogue. It's when the musicians, they can, they can speak through their instruments and they establish a superior kind of communication. I'll take note after this if someone could tell me after what the expression was but the concept is perfect to express this. We believe that as long as we have as many participants as possible, we'll improve the dialogues and we can try and will finally, will eventually reach the solutions we expect. My third and last point is that we, is another thing that I took notice during the summit, once again, is the importance of the term implementation. And this point was raised this morning during the discussion of the implementation of sustainable development goals. We are fully aware that many countries face the risk of not implementing them within the initially agreed timeframe for all reasons that were extensively presented during that panel. But once again, T20 Brazil and work to be delivered by the task forces constitute an opportunity to continue the effort of President T20 additions. And I would like to stress that the importance of continuity to promote discussion and presentation of ideas in the pursuit of attainment of the agreed upon objectives. So we are also fully aware that the success of T20 Brazil will depend also on its capacity for nurturing a meaningful dialogue not only with SHAPPA and financial tracks but also with the various engagement groups of T20, a point that was stressed by Mrs. Luciana Servo a few minutes ago. We shall take advantage that T20 is a multifaceted group to develop a better and more intense dialogue in all levels. That is key for the results we are expecting for. I would end this brief presentation stressing that there is no surprise at all that we live in a polarized, complex, and unpredictable world. Not only governments but also society needs the input to think about and adopt the necessary measures to face these challenging new circumstances. In this aspect, think tanks have here an important and irreplaceable role to play. We all saw how T20 India was successful in presenting new ways and ideas in all its task forces. And as a member of T20 Brazil Organizing Committee, I am sure that all the three institutions here represented aim to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much and that gives us a good sense of Brazil's priorities and how the organizational process is likely to move forward. From Brazil to Latin America, now I can invite you Maria to talk a bit because a lot of this was about, you know, we have talked a lot about Africa, we have talked a lot about various parts of the world looking at the G20 process through their lens. Now when G20 is being hosted by Brazil in your part of the world, how do you look at Brazil's presidency and also the role that perhaps G20 can play in today's context where multilateralism is fraying as we've been saying of all along this past few years, these past few years as well as in the past few days. So from your perspective, how do you look at this particular presidency? And of course, are there specific priorities for you that you want Brazil to take on behalf of Latin America as a whole?
Well, thank you. Thank you very much and everything we heard was music to our ears, I think. And of course, my home country Ecuador is not going to join G20 yet. So that's not why I am here. I’m part of the community, a non-G20 country from Latin America. So, I feel privileged to be here, having this exchange. And basically, you know, three key messages. The number one, I think that we have a one-in-a-lifetime opportunity to change the narrative about the Global South in general. And as a poet, I can say that narratives and words matter. And the truth is, when we say “the Global South,” first of all, I agree with, in one of the panels today, they said “the Global South is not a monolithic entity. We are very diverse, we have very different agendas, different traditions, cultures, but we have some things in common.” But when you say “the Global South,” you say, you know, the poor, the needy, you know, the people needing help, et cetera. We have to help the Global South. And the truth is, Indonesia, India, Brazil, and South Africa have the opportunity to change the narrative about the Global South in a way that when you say “the Global South,” you immediately think the world of opportunity, the worlds of wealth, the world where the critical resources are, the mega-diverse countries, the culturally diverse countries, the world of innovation and opportunity. And I think that that conceptual shift is perhaps one of the most important things because it’s, you know, chapter one of understanding the new geopolitics and the polycentric, multipolar world. So, I think that that has started. I really wish that Brazil will continue with that flip of the narrative, flip of the meaning, flip of the metaphors when we address the Global South. Number two, I think that thinking more about the role of the T20, sometimes we think, and I’ve been in both sides of the coin, working for government, that think tanks, of course, it’s collective intellect, the world of ideas, the world of creativity and possibility. And sometimes, we forget the part of strategy and tactics to make sure that whatever we produce has an impact in decision-makers. It becomes real policy, tangible change on the ground. And I think that’s also a part where we perhaps need to work a little more. And the verbs I would use is sustain, boost, and innovate. And I’m totally with you. Sustain the huge, enormous legacy of the Indian presidency. Boost the initiatives that have emerged from here. And of course, I’m biased, but I really wish that women’s rights and gender equality really has a cross-cutting presence throughout the efforts that are made. And of course, innovate. And it was, I had a list of themes. And it’s also music to our ears to listen, to address the issue of inequalities. This is critical. It’s critical for Latin America. We are unfortunately the second-most unequal region in the entire planet. And this cannot continue in a way. We are, we say that Latin America suffers from a double trap. And the double trap is slow growth and high inequality. And I think that there are formulas to, in a way, overcome that. In terms of innovation of the way we do work, I think that Luciana was very clear on what is the structure, what is the choreography that you’re thinking. And perhaps a few recommendations should be, we first need more interaction and more dialogue between the working groups, but between the different teams, to connect the new financial architecture with the climate discussion, with a women-led development conversation, with a digital inclusion and innovation section, you know, that kind of cross-working group conversations. But we also need greater conversation and interaction with the other engagement groups. I know that logistically, it’s very complicated and challenging. But we had a small exercise of that in Goa, where the Working Group on Women-led Development was meeting. And then a meeting with the W20, the C20, and other 20s that were there to discuss the issue of women’s rights. And believe me, that it was incredibly enriching to have that cross-engagement group discussion. And perhaps, looking again at Latin America, I really appreciate the engagement with non-G20 groups. You mentioned Africa, you mentioned the Amazonian countries, you mentioned Latin America. I strongly believe that Latin America as a continent and the Caribbean need to go back to the global stage to discuss global issues. We have been, for more than a decade, absent of the global conversation. And we look at Brazil as a means, as a bridge, to allow Latin America and the Caribbean to come together and make sure that we come back to the global stage in a way, not to discuss issues of Latin America only, but to discuss global issues. And that leads me perhaps to my final point on multilateralism and UN reform and reform of the international financial architecture. The truth is that I follow very closely the process, you know, the organization of the Summit of the Future, the different tracks of the reform of the United Nations. And the truth is that we need the G20 to have a louder voice, to be more engaged, to be more vocal, to serve as an engine, to serve as an energy box to make it happen. Because in my 30-plus years of experience in the multilateral system, I have never seen such a traction and a momentum to go, to be serious about transforming the multilateral system. I think we should really invest, the G20 should invest time in having a loud voice as we prepare for the Summit of the Future. And if you allow me a few words more about India. And of course, I had notes here for the need of a global tax pact of discussing seriously the issue of debt and sustainable development. You know that almost 80% of countries in Latin America are in debt distress. And they invest more in debt service than in health or education. This is a serious matter and I think we should, we need to consider. But just perhaps a final word on T20 and India. This is the last session of the T20, but it’s not the end of our collective work. And I think that the entire T20 process, and I’m new to this family, I have to say, has been, you know, an incredible intellectual and human experience. And I would like to publicly thank the T20, the T20 Secretariat, ORF, the Chairs, the Government of India, the Ministry of Foreign Affairs for this, and thank the thousands of souls and minds that are behind this effort. And it has not only been about content, but about form as well, about the voices, the youth participating, about the colors and the culture. And I think we should really appreciate as we look at the future. And the future starts today, actually. And we have just started our collective work and co-creating this collective intelligence to build a better world. So, thank you, thank you very much for that, for really showing in practice what people’s diplomacy is about, people’s G20 can be about, and what the T20 has taught us collectively. So, thank you, thank you, and very much looking forward to Brazil.
Thank you, thank you, Maria. And we know we are running out of time, but there’s very brief comments from all of you. I think Maria’s last point being involving as many stakeholders as possible. And India, perhaps, as I think Dr. Jaishankar yesterday mentioned, for India, it has been a process of bringing Indians to the global public and engaging the other way around as well. So, in terms of Brazil, Ambassador, if you can briefly articulate, is a similar process, thinking process going on that this is perhaps a right time for not only bringing Brazil to the world, but also Latin America to global conversations that are happening, both in terms of reforming, as you mentioned, the multilateral order, multilateral frameworks, multilateral development institutions, but also being part of global conversations from which perhaps, as Maria pointed out, Latin America has not been engaged with for some time? Very briefly, sir.
Very briefly, I have to confess that we are very much thinking about our own problems. And we should pay much more attention to the international reality than we do. And I think an occasion such as the T20 would help to broaden our minds, to open the discussions, and to bring in more people to discuss these topics and pay attention to what should be done.
Luciana, for you, in terms of the outcomes that you’re looking from, you know, you explained in great detail the choreography of how Brazil is thinking about the structures and processes. But in terms of concrete outcomes, some of this was mentioned, particularly coming from Latin American experience about inequality, hunger, poverty, some very deep-rooted challenges there. How are you looking to push this agenda at a time when we have also talked about this aspect, when geopolitical contestation is perhaps preventing a large part of the world from actually managing some of these challenges, which for a large part of the world are real and happening in real time? Is there a program of action there? Is there a sense that we can deliver and we can implement, as I think Almero was mentioning, some of the challenges or some of the ideas that have been on the table for quite some time? So, is there some thinking going on in that regard as well? Or is it still too early to discuss this?
I think we have had the experience of going forward in respect of these topics in Brazil and then backwards, yes? It’s quite clear for us that you have to really accelerate this process and make it sustainable. Because if you go forward and backwards all the time, it would be impossible for maintaining. So, besides accelerating the SDGs, I think how to sustain this process? I think what is being discussed in this early section, how to sustain this process that we don’t go backwards as we have done with the crisis that we have, with the debts, with the problems that we have on financing, with the problems that we have in our own economies. But in fact, I think this is an international problem. It’s not a local problem, it’s not a national problem. And how we are going to engage the T20 even more in this agenda of hunger, poverty, and have a plan of action that goes from structure and sustainability and inclusiveness is our main challenge and from going from what we have done here, that is amazing, and forward. And for us, for sure, bringing Latin Americans to the debate, bringing other institutions from Brazil to the debate is an achievement that we want to accomplish in this T20. And bringing Brazilians to know more about Asia and India and Africa and all these things is fundamental. I think most of the Brazilians, even the researchers, are quite engaged in the national agendas, as Mr. Karamuru said. So, having this accomplishment to bring the global topics to the debate in Brazil, to the global topics to the debate in Latin America, I think will be important for us also. And I also want to think in one minute, no, 15 seconds, to really thank you because it was a learning process from the beginning until now. And I think we have much to learn from India and from Indonesia. But we have already been talking to the support that we need from India and for all the other think tankers and institutions that are here, that are engaged in the T20 for a long time. So, really counting on your support for doing the T20. Brazil has been as successful as India has been. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Almer, last word, last question to you as we wrap this up. You know, Maria made a very interesting point about changing the narrative about Global South. And I think, you know, Indonesia, India, Brazil, and South Africa have this enormous opportunity of reshaping or reconfiguring the way we talk about Global South. Because I think she was right that we talk about Global South in terms that perhaps don’t reflect today’s aspirations in the Global South. So, is it something that Brazil would be pushing or engaged with through this process? Because that’s something which I think we have seen in the last few years emerge as one of the key themes in these geographies, where demographics are changing, where aspirations are changing, where increasingly, I think, Global South wants to look at its own role differently in global politics.
Thank you very much. Brazil is really eager to help in changing those narratives. We are in this situation of being a real, complex, and unpredictable world because we have to begin changing some narratives. Brazil is doing, I believe, this work in this sense. We are redesigning public policies, we are establishing new bridges, we are really wanting to be part of a solution in this aspect. So, I think that bringing Latin America, bringing Africa, bringing as many participants as possible, it will help to change the narrative in the benefit of all. It’s not just the benefits of these regions mentioned. It’s in the benefit of the entire world. That’s what we are looking for. And I believe that T20 Brazil will be working very hard with your help, with your assistance, to attain those goals.
Thank you very much. It was an excellent conversation about the future of T20 and G20 process as we take this forward. And wishing Brazil all the luck and wishing Latin America all the luck as we take this conversation forward. Thank you so much, and thank you all for joining us.
Thank you very much, panelists. May I request you to come to the front of the stage for a quick family photo? And that’s what we’ve heard about the expectations and the hopes for the next G20 presidency. And as we wrap up the evening, I am excited to invite... Thank you, panelists. We of course have a few last words to share with you. And to start off the process of saying our thank yous, I would like to invite on stage Ambassador Soojin Channoy, Chair of Think20 India, to give his closing remarks. Ambassador Channoy, if you could come on stage?
Well, good afternoon to all of you. I was a little delayed coming up here because I was looking for Dr. Samir Saran. But you are there, yes, that’s right. You are all over the place. Look, you know, it would be really presumptuous on my part to try your patience at this stage of our conversations, at the end of two days of extraordinary, you know, discussion and discourse on a large number of issues. But it is by way of my duty as the Think20 Chair that I stand before you and actually attempt to say a few words. Firstly, I want to thank all the participants from around the world who took time out from their own busy schedules to come all the way to Mysore and be with us. And above all, to have supported us throughout the past eight to nine months. A number of events were held and by now, I know I’ve made such a large number of new friends as well. I want to thank the members of the International Advisory Board who have also supported us throughout our work. I want to thank the members of the task forces who have actually done all the heavy lifting. So please give them a round of applause as well. I want to thank Dr. Samir Saran and his entire crew, the G20 Secretariat, for doing an outstanding job. I'll be remiss if I didn't mention that I want to thank other members of the core group of Think 20 India. So that includes Dr. Sachin Chaturvedi and his colleagues as well. The G20 Secretariat, very important, you know, structure that was created by the Government of India. And it's represented here this evening by Ambassador Mukesh Paradeshi. So through you, Mukesh, I want to thank the G20 Secretariat and the Government of India, the Ministry of External Affairs, the External Affairs Minister, the Sherpa as well. So ladies and gentlemen, over the past two days, we've had, as I said before, very rich discussions, a kind of rich harvest in my view. It's not quite over. The last ball, as we say in cricket, has not yet been played. Though this was a T20 group, in my view, and for those of you who don't know what T20 means in cricket, it's the shorter version of the game. I can assure you that we don't intend it to be the short version of the game. For us, it's like a test match. It has to continue beyond the Indian presidency as well. So please keep that in mind. We have successfully published, as Dr. Saran had pointed out, hundreds of policy papers, too numerous to be recounted individually. The task forces, as you've seen today, have successfully come up with and launched their own communiques. Many side events were also held in Mysore. Like the first one that I attended was the conversation between the, between Task Force Three and Task Force Six. There was also a conversation between T20 and T7 in the Bellagio format. And I think all these conversations, plus the ones that you would have had outside of my knowledge, these are very important and we must value their content, your commitment to these dialogues and the fact that we should continue with such conversations. Now, you'll all agree that G20 is the most diverse and representative group that exists today and the need of the R is to ensure that we continue to work together as a team, bring about greater cohesion and cooperation and above all fundamentally to ensure that its focus remains, whether now or in the future, on key developmental issues. And this was also underscored by the minister yesterday. I also feel that multilateralism, which has been discussed today as well, as represented by the UN, as we all know, is dysfunctional. And I do feel that the G20 is providing a new opportunity for the world to come together, to actually create a new kind of multilateralism in which we are all equal, in which we do not keep others out of the G20 conversation, one that actually still can hold out hope for us and for the future of humanity. For me, it's not an either/or issue, so it's not a question of the G20 trying to usurp the role of the formal UN structures. But nor should be, should it be a case of the United Nations or the UN Security Council in particular trying to usurp the role of the G20. So we have to be mindful of the fact that just as, you know, at least for a year or more, the UN and the League of Nations, which sank without a trace in 1946, actually coexisted. In this case, we want to ensure that the G20 does not sink. Anything else may sink. But the G20 must continue to ride the storm and coexist with UN structures, not to condemn them, not to confront them, but to actually try and seek better reform. Both can coexist, in my view. It is not my intention to summarize anything, as I said at the beginning. But it's important to acknowledge the contribution of the think tank community, the research community, those that have also come in from other spaces, vital spaces, like, you know, those that study societal issues and well-being and ethics. It's the first time that we brought this kind of an eclectic crowd together. And I think it's actually enriched our discourse and conversation. I acknowledge your contributions. But I urge the think tank community to keep up the pressure. We must keep up the pressure on G20 governments in particular. And to do so in a credible manner will require that we ensure that the conversations that we have in India or in future in Brazil and South Africa, that these conversations are representative. If they are not representative enough, they will not be credible. And if they're not credible, we will not be able to bring about the required pressure on governments to take note of what we are saying. So I think you will agree that in India, we have succeeded in doing this. We have people from all over the world. The conversations have covered virtually every theme and everyone in that spectrum across the world. So continuity in our efforts is very important. The question really is how do we do it? What kind of continuity? How do we ensure that the experience of India, for instance, which I've heard is greatly valued by people, is also in its own way acceptable manner at the comfort level that suits the next presidency? That we pass this on in an appropriate manner? We can leave it to every presidency to, you know, devise and shape and curate their own structures, as we've just heard from colleagues from Brazil. But it would be a shame to let the efforts of this G20 presidency go in vain. And that really means allowing your hard work, your contributions, to go in vain. So therefore, I urge each one of you to think about structures. This morning, we heard Dr. Samir Saran and Dr. Sachin Chaturvedi briefly introduce to you the idea of the G20 Global Research Forum that was effectively proposed and launched by them. The final contours, I understand, are not yet in place. And it would be extremely useful for Dr. Samir and the Secretariat to actually reach out to you and seek your views further on how we might give some shape to this structure so that it can provide some continuity as well. The whole idea, as he had said, was to conduct research, to also use the convening power that we have in India to organize events and seminars and to provide the necessary inputs to the next presidency for their own consideration at the comfort level at which they wish to accept them. I hope we can therefore work out a structure that's fit for purpose. And it is time also now, over the next few months, to hand over to Brazil the baton of the Think 20. I understand that we will do it at a halfway house in Cape Town. Did I get it right? Dr. Samir Saran, did I get it right? Or is it some other? Actually, he had already revealed it in the morning. So I'm only echoing what he had told others. But I don't mind traveling all the way to Brazil. I love Brazil. I've been there a few times, so please change your mind also if you like. Though Elizabeth will not be too happy about that. Now, finally, the, I feel that the success of the G20 process will depend essentially on two very simple and fundamental things. One, the amount of interest that G20 governments themselves take in addressing key issues on which we have spent a great deal of time. Some take greater interest, some take lesser interest. And so again, it'll, you know, sort of devolve on you to put that pressure and get them to think about these issues. The kind of pressure that the think tank community can generate on their own governments to contribute more to the G20 process will be one of the keys to future success. In this fractured world, by the way, don't worry too much about think tankers not being heard and being frustrated. Even governments are not really heard, you know. Many of the governments themselves are quite helpless in addressing their own issues. So as think tankers, I think we can roll with the punches. And on the mezzanine floor, I saw that golden man, you know, with a hat in that position. Many of you know what that means, keep walking, keep walking. I wish you all good health and success in all your endeavors until we meet again. Where we meet and how we meet and all that, you know, Dr. Samir Saran is the ringmaster, so he will decide all that. Over to you, Dr. Saran. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Channoy and Ambassador Channoy, actually. You are elevated. Okay. No, no, look, this is, this is a poignant moment for a number of reasons. First of all, that I hope that I'm able to maintain my five phone calls a day to Ambassador Channoy. The Secretariat function allowed me to have a lot of conversations with him. And I hope we can find new reasons to continue our conversations. So I think our relationship is going to go through a transition and we have to make sure we come out stronger. So I want all of us to applaud Dr. Channoy, Ambassador Channoy, for his wonderful contributions. Of course, he has already thanked the G20 Secretariat and Secretary Paradeshi. Thank you so much for your support. Alongside the MEA, I would also like to acknowledge, and here I think we should stand up and applaud the Government of Karnataka, who has hosted us over the last three days and have really, really opened their hearts and their doors. We had the additional Chief Secretary with us a little while ago. Some of his team members are here, so thank you very much. Please convey our greetings as well as our thank yous to Karnataka Government for this effort. Silently, but in a very strong manner, a few organizations, without being overtly in your face or on the stage, have supported our presidencies. We were able to host you multiple times through the year, in multiple locations. We were able to raise the resources, courtesy very strong support from the Asian Development Bank, Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and Conrad Adnosh Tiftoom. All three of them, as you can see, have been rather under the radar, but have been very generous in ensuring, along with the Ministry of External Affairs and if I would dare say, the Observer Research Foundation, who is also invested in this process, to put together a kitty and a war chest that events like these demand to be intensive, inclusive, relentless. Someone said that's Janvi's personality. But if you have to be successful, you have to have the means to do this. And we really should applaud these sponsors. Ministry of External Affairs, ADB, Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation and of course, the Conrad Adnosh Tiftoom for their support. We have already thanked the task forces. I started the program by thanking them upside down, the book you wrote, sir. So I proposed my vote of thanks on day zero. Also thanked the core group, also thanked the advisory board. But I think one group deserves the second thanks. And that is the T20 Secretariat, the 32, T20 Secretariat members. I would request them to be revealed on the, on the slide here. These are the wonderful people who have served you. They are standing right there behind in the room. Raise your hands and well done, well done. They are right there at the behind of the room. Now, since the world is upside down, my substantive speech for this event begins now. Okay, I'm kidding. There are a few things I will not do, give a substantive speech and give you an answer why are Indian men loud and why are they always so hyper? These two are mysteries of the universe that shall not be revealed. Right? But we will, I will use this moment to tell you that the show will go on. We have completed the responsibility part of our journey, where we were responsible for providing ideas and inputs to the leaders. And that part we have, that culminates now. Now it's time for us to do two things. Disseminate these ideas and go back to being researchers. To disseminate the ideas, like I had mentioned, we are going to meet in New York during the UNGA week. Lots of events are planned. There are at least five or six task forces which are directly implicated and the seventh one is also in part going to contribute to the discussions there. So any of you who happens to be in town, please do write to us and we will connect you to the opportunities that abound during that week through this network. If you have your own connections and information on certain other events that are taking place, do let the Secretariat know so that we could send out a bulletin to everyone. And we are happy to be the post, the clearing desk of connecting people to opportunities. We will be hosting a pre-COP event in UAE. And again, at least four out of the seven task forces are contributing to that. And if you add multilateralism, those are five out of seven. That will have a direct bearing on what we shape in Abu Dhabi or UAE at that particular point of time. So again, those of you who are desirous of contributing and traveling to that part of the world, do reach out to us and we will find ways of bringing you there and use your talent and your expertise to strengthen the process. As Ambassador Channoy mentioned, we are hosting on the 23rd, 24th and 25th of November, the first inaugural Cape Town Conversations. I have the buy-ins from Indonesia, India, Brazil and South Africa to host this as the first G20 and Global South Summit. And we hope that on this occasion, barring a few formalities that are still pending, we will be able to actually hand over the T20 Secretariat to the Brazilian presidency. And we will use that opportunity to complete this process. We will also make this an annual gathering that is focused on bringing voices from the others into the mainstream of the G20 thinking. So this is something that is certainly going to be captured in the institutionalization or the structure that Ambassador Channoy has requested us to put together on the research forum, the components of research convenings and capacity building that we seek to undertake in the days ahead. We are, the second job that now is going to fall on us is to go back to being researchers. We have scribbled some good policy ideas. It's now time to expand them into papers. We have tried to already reach out to some of you and have put together some compendiums, some edited volumes that have been released over the past three days. I think at least seven, if I remember correctly, which have been published and released on this occasion. But we are planning at least another six that I can inform you today. One is on the African seat at the G20 and arguments and opportunities and indeed the imperatives for that. And we are putting together a compilation with SIA and other institutions. We want to put this together before the Cape Town Conversations and release it there. We have a whole compendium volume coming out on life and food security. This is something, food, fertilizer, fuel was mentioned a few times during this summit and that's the second edited volume that we want to put together. Emerging technologies and the Global South is another area that we want to explore, experiences and expectations from different parts of the world on technology and its implications for their agendas. The fourth volume is on climate change and health. This is a new topic introduced by the COP28 President, the COP28 Secretariat. And we want to be able to contribute to that. And we want to, we want to get our experts who are on two different health streams, SDG and climate, to think about the intersectionality, add gender to it because it's going to be huge. We know that it implicates the weak and the vulnerable and women the most. And we want to bring that element into our, into our research papers. So that's going to be the fourth one. The fifth is going to be on services and digital trade. And we are again, we have already received interest in this room from a few who want to take this forward. And finally, we want to come out with a special series on gender with GWL. Maria is here, along with ORF. We are going to be curating a series on gender, climate and development. And again, we look forward to your participation. Now, let me leave two thoughts with you as we close this program. One, when you have nothing profound to share or say, which is usually the case when I'm speaking, I turn to Bollywood. And I try to see if I can remember some nice dialogues that I can share with you and put them out of context and make them sound nice and profound. So there's one dialogue that has stayed with me for more than a decade. So there's one dialogue that has stayed with me for more than a decade, maybe two decades. It was from a cheesy, medium-grade Hindi film. And it said something that is important for the world today. In a deeply polarized and divided polity, international community and indeed national arrangements as well. I remember that line from Bollywood which says, "The heart is on the left, but it is always right." So let us not divide ourselves on left and right. Let us search for the common humanity, which by the way, abounds in this room. All of you are wonderful people. Some of you may have different perspectives. No one is right, no one is wrong. We are co-travelers. Let's celebrate the diversity, the difference, and let's make it our strength rather than a reason for friction. So thank you very much for the common humanity you have presented before us today. And let's keep this alive and intact in Rio and let Brazilian rhythms enrich this common humanity. And that's my first thought for you. Since I mentioned Brazil, and since Ambassador Channoy had mentioned the handing over, let me also confirm to you that we are already in touch with our Brazilian colleagues. We have established a process that is going to allow for a smooth transfer on December 1st. And from November 1st this year, we will actively begin the process of handing over the keys to our colleagues and our friends from the different institutions that are going to be in charge in Brazil. And like the Indonesians who held our hands in our early days, we have promised to remain on call anytime they would need us as they settle into taking charge. But I am confident that their academic vigor, and I know all the three institutions well, their moves on the floor and off the floor, and certainly the unique location of Brazil, which is, I think, Latin America and a part of the world that remains underexplored in many of our conversations, is going to offer us new course for focusing on how we can serve all of humanity. But let me warn the Brazilians, that our colleagues, that we warn them, that as, I think it was Anna who mentioned it, or maybe someone else, that the, I think it was maybe someone else as well who mentioned this, that the pop culture meets academic discourse, nature of Indian presidency means there are millions, millions of Indians, from maybe 1,000 before the beginning of the presidency to maybe 100 million at the end of the Indian presidency, who today know about the G20. We are coming for you. We are coming to your country and we are going to celebrate with you. So best of luck and be ready for a truck full of Indians landing on your shores and talking to you about the G20. Best of luck and see you later. Thank you.
Thank you, Ambassador Channoy. Thank you, Dr. Saran. On that note, I am pleased to close the Think 20 summit. And we will now move to a small break. And then for the cultural part of the next one and a half days, the Secretariat...